Good evening. The Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of Tuesday, September 6th, AM calling to order, Alice Kelly, Chair.
Mike Canata.
Andrew Holt, Alternate.
John Comtoys, Alternate.
Nick Demetriades.
Brian Dufresne.
Vincenzo Marfella.
Dr. Kowalski.
Okay, could I have a motion to see our alternates, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the agenda, is there anything to add to the agenda, Mr. Popper? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we can have public comments on anything that is not on the public hearings. Anybody wish to say hello, goodbye? Okay, moving on. Development Compliance Officer, Mr. Driscoll.
I have nothing to add, other than what you have enclosed in your packet. I'd be glad to answer any questions or comment on anything that you'd like to discuss that's on that. I believe it's the third page in.
Right, yes. Does anybody have any comments or anything for Mr. Driscoll? If not, moving on, Mr. Popper. With us tonight, we also have Mr. Popper, Mr. Driscoll, our Zone Enforcement Officer, Mr. Popper, ours. Town Planner, Hanlon, Emmy, our Clerk, and also, I believe back in there, is our Mayor, James E. Demetrius. Anybody else from the town? Okay, if not, Mr. Popper, you're up.
So we have, we're very excited. As we mentioned last time, we're waiting anxiously for the opening of the Middlesex Hospital Office Building over on Shumpike Road. We're very excited to see that, it's coming along great, looks very nice, it's a very impressive building. We're very excited about the new Mediterranean Market they're coming along and the former that was at one time the Blockbuster Site, later it was the Aaron Rental Furniture Site. So they're gonna be basically the largest tenant in that shopping center, so we're very excited about that. So that's very good.
What's it called?
Um, I don't know the exact name of it, to be honest.
I've been watching it and I don't think I can read.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't seen the name either.
I think it's Turkish, though.
Yeah, it's a Mediterranean Market.
Okay.
So we're very excited about that.
Yes.
Also, the Cromwell Chicken, the Popeyes is under construction, so that's moving along. I don't know if anybody has any questions for Bruce or I.
Anybody have any questions for? Okay. Moving on, Mr. Popper?
So we have new business, we have application, we don't have any applications to acceptance schedule. So we will have a meeting, our first meeting in October, we will have a number of public hearing items on that, but we have no new, new applications to acceptance schedule. We do have application for new business, which is not a public hearing, we have Application 25-17, which is an application for a site plan modification at 161 Berlin Road. The applicant is Walmart Inc., and the owner is Infinity Cromwell Property LTD Partnership. There is a representative here, and the commission members did receive copies of a plan
Right.
in their package. So that, of that outlines, the gentleman is here, if you could introduce yourself and make a description of the project.
You don't have it on?
No, unfortunately, his computer doesn't match our cord.
I have to apologize, our cords that we have in our inventory don't fit his newer computers, so we're gonna have to update our inventory of cords that we have.
Okay.
I told Bruce I'd let him know what it was, though, so for future, that I'll be prepared. But I did, in the event technology failed me, print out the exhibit that's before you. I do have six copies.
I can pass them around, just so you guys can.
Okay. Yeah, we all, yeah, we have them. I mean, at least I do.
This one I think came up recently, because there's a couple of big benefits in here that came as part of the town commons that I think you guys will actually like.
Before you start, can we get your name and address?
Right.
Do you have any card with you by any chance? I don't think I have a card, but I'll give you my name. It's Jeff Board, Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut with Bowler Engineering, located at 65 LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. Again, here on behalf of Walmart Inc., sure all of you are familiar with the existing Walmart that's out there today, and what Bowler's been doing for Walmart across the country, really, is going around and updating the online pickup parking spaces to just account for the new parking demands that are, that are existing in the world today. Right now, on that site
Are you sure?
in the southeast corner, and you can kinda see on this plan here, we're putting in a building expansion of 4,400 feet, southeast corner of the building. It's tucked away where they have the seasonal outdoor storage, and we're taking the 16 existing online pickup spaces and making 31 online pickup spaces in that location.
Excuse me, do you have an extra copy of this for you, so that you can turn that to the people in the audience?
I don't, but I turned this anyways, and
Okay.
I can do something like this, if that would help. So again, in the southeast corner of the site, that's where the building expansion's going, it's about 4,400 square feet. There's 717 spaces existing on-site right now, we're reducing that by 16 spaces for a total of 701, so there's a reduction in parking spaces going on, there's an increase in the online pickup, and then part of what we had done as part of the expansion was we received feedback from all the town staff, and there had been a lot of concerns about drainage out to the street in the rear on Kirby Road. There had been a lot of flooding issues on Kirby Road, and we were very sensitive to that, and one of the suggestions that came up last minute, which I think on that colored exhibit you'll see, Kirby Road is no longer there. So, within the packets that you guys, or not Kirby Road, our extension drive into the Walmart is no longer there, and that was a suggestion that came up from town staff to basically remove that driveway and get rid of it, so now we're actually decreasing the amount of impervious coverage on-site, and that change just didn't make it into the design plans, because that came up late last week, and we did think it was important. One of the things that they had asked us to do was also increase the landscaping, which is what you see in dark green on that plan, was kinda supplementing all of the existing landscaping in that location.
I'm confused. So which driveway is getting eliminated?
So there was an existing driveway that was an emergency egress only that went all the way out to Kirby Road.
Okay.
So there's a gate out there now.
Okay.
And we were coordinating it, it was for fire access only.
Gotcha, okay, so it's that, not the one that's all the way
Correct.
to the west of the building?
Correct.
That exits in front of Route 2.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And it just connected there, and it was a big deal from the fire marshal's standpoint, which he is where we started with this whole discussion, and he blessed the current plan as shown on this color rendering. So, other than that, it's really a site safety project, they're basically updating a lot of the parking lot striping, all the stop bars, the stop signs, weight finding signs, and then the online pickup. So, you know, from a stormwater standpoint, it is consistent with the 2024 Stormwater Quality Guidelines, the engineer has reviewed it, issued no further comment, and I believe the only outstanding comment, other than the removal of that driveway, was to make one of the online pickup stalls van accessible, which Walmart has standards for that, and that was one thing that we're gonna add, just detail for, moving forward. But, other than that, that's, that's the extent of the proposed work, and at the end of the day, it's a increase in landscaping, reduction in impervious surface, and then an increase in the online pickup stalls.
What are these things?
Do you have any idea what the building's gonna look like?
I do, and I, I had an entire rendering to show you guys, I could definitely be back and show you what that would look like next time, and just bring an adapter. Basically, they're keeping the majority of the building the same, the existing brick is staying the same, it's going to this dark gray color where there's not existing red brick, and then they're doing a blue facade where the Walmart logo is going, but I could certainly share that.
Could you do us a favor, and on the board, can you face it towards the audience?
Right.
And show where, what the commission is looking at in regards to?
Yeah, so essentially, this is the southeast corner, the front of the Walmart is down on the bottom of the page here, and that's where the 4,000 square foot expansion's going. That was that access drive that we're cutting off now and just replanting with grass and landscaping, and then there's an existing eight-foot fence here at this location on the property line, and then our OPD stalls, or our online pickup stalls are all located in these two parking rows now, and going to that new expansion area. So that's the gist of what's going on on-site. But no change to operations, no change to foot traffic in the store, they're basically doing this as a, you know, 16 spaces for online pickups, just not enough to support today's industry.
So there's a couple of issues that we have.
Sure.
So the first thing, I have a question for you, is the proposed addition involves the abandonment of the existing access drive, you were gonna basically abandon part of it, we would like to see the whole thing abandoned if there's no purpose to it.
Yeah, so, so that, if you look at the color rendering, that's the one change that we've made from Friday till now.
Okay.
So, all of that greenery that you're seeing on this exhibit, and then the handout, is basically, we removed the entirety of that driveway.
Okay.
So it's all, it's all landscaping now, so whereas before that came up, there was a slight increase in impervious coverage, which we designed stormwater to mitigate for that.
Right.
Now, we're keeping that basin that we designed in, just as a redundancy with the history on Kirby, that's gonna stay in even with the reduction of impervious, so it's kind of belts and suspenders, because that system we designed goes to the large underground system currently on-site.
Okay, and so, also, you had a request, you had mentioned it from the, from the Building Department in regards to the handicap sign and the handicap space.
Correct.
So the plans have been revised to address that.
Yep, we're basically putting one van accessible, right, the closest one to the door for the online pickup stalls.
Okay.
Those are the two outstanding items that I wanted to make sure we got across tonight.
Okay, and then, we have an issue with Walmart that has nothing to do with you.
I get that on a lot of these.
So we wanna
Listen. I pass it along.
Okay. So, and I'm gonna let Bruce kinda describe that.
Sure.
And, just, move past. Pardon me?
Seasonal? Is that what you don't know? What do you want me to describe? Or my comments?
You know, because of the, the lack of complying with the previous landscaping.
Oh, so you were aware, you received my comments, my original comments that were, my original comments that were dated August 26th, which have been superseded by September 10th, and essentially, the original comments were that all of the original landscaping, as per the landscaping plan of the original approved site plan by the commission. All of that needs to be replaced, because Walmart has, for whatever reason, cut down trees, removed bushes, and there's bare vacant islands
Okay.
that were previously supposed to be landscaped, as you're well aware.
Yep.
So, one of, one of the comments that I'd like to see the commission use as a condition of approval, should they decide to approve this, is that a detailed landscaping plan specific to the proposed project be submitted for staff review, which you've already done, and that prior to the issuance of any zoning permit for this addition, all missing landscaping that was originally called for from the 1996 plan will be replaced. So they're not gonna get a zoning permit, which means they don't get a building permit.
Sure.
So, they can jump on the bandwagon, now it's great time to be planting this time of the year?
Yeah.
They can get going.
Yep, yeah, and we have a professional landscape architect on staff who basically designed the plan that's before you tonight, Wayne Violet, so if that is a condition of approval, we would basically propose to Walmart that we go out, assess all the landscaping for that plan, or assess any of the trees that aren't doing well that were in place, and we'd be happy to take a look at that.
So if they, if they can act now and attack this with the same vigor they do with the holiday inventory that they stockpile there, that would be great.
I'll pass it along.
Thank you.
In some way.
I do have a question.
Sure.
On this. This light green.
Yes.
What is that?
That, that, that used to be asphalt, that's where the driveway used to be, and we're replanting that with a lawn, and then the dark green circles are all of the proposed landscaping and additional buffer plantings that are being proposed, so.
And this is the new building?
Yep.
It's gonna be covered by lawn?
Yep, it's gonna be surrounded by lawn with just the crosswalk and then the little sidewalk over to the door.
And then, this is how people get here?
Correct.
And all that?
Yep.
It's gonna be just lawn?
Yep.
Grass?
Just grass, and then, and then the landscaping around it, correct.
And I see that you have this big tree right here?
Yes.
Right by, as you're coming in the door?
Uh, we have, that one's more columnar in nature, and then I think along the property line, there were some different evergreens, I have the mix, yeah, there's honey locust, there's limbar pine.
Oh, I see all this stuff here.
Yeah, so they, so they basically designed it in a way that's consistent with Walmart standards and then town standards as well.
If you take a look now, is this is the crosswalk here from people?
Correct.
No, but they don't go into this building here, am I correct?
They're go, they're going into the new expansion for the online pickup, so it's being redesigned to, to house the online pickup.
So you're gonna go in, it's not gonna be taken out to your car?
Oh, no, that, they'll be coming out to the cars with all the orders from that door across the crosswalk.
That's what it's for.
Customers don't go in.
It's for the employees.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, is so that nobody from their cars are going into this new building.
Nope.
I just wanna, because when you said they walk this way, come up this way, I'm saying
Yeah, that's, that's when the Walmart employees are going back to the building, they go back
Oh, okay, so you can have a tree there if you want.
Sure.
I mean, it looks awful big, I feel sorry for them. Okay, and now with this new, and you're getting rid of some of the car, some of the parking lot?
Correct.
Over here where they're picking up?
So, so basically, the loss of the st, bases where we were talking about, they're actually adding additional cart corrals, because that's been another issue with carts all over the parking lot in the front drive aisle, so they're actually updating their current standards, so a lot of the loss in parking wasn't actually on that side of the building, it was in the front of the building where they're adding additional cart corrals, so that that problem's less of an issue moving forward, because that had been a big issue with carts all over the parking lot, that they basically just outdated the cart corrals that got installed, and I believe he said 1996, the standards have changed slightly since then, so they're basically bringing it into current standards.
Right, 'cause it's, can be kind of hairy with your cars with
Oh, sure.
people coming in.
Yep.
I always felt that it wasn't wide enough, especially when you have these magnet kind of trucks that come in
Yep.
and stick out like this.
Sure.
So it's up to the commission as to whether or not they wanna wait and see the architectural elevation of the building. If the commission wants to approve the plan, it would be with the conditions, the only outstanding conditions are those mentioned in Mr. Driscoll's memo, they've addressed all the other staff comments, so there are no outstanding comments on the application at this point. If the commission wishes to see the architectural elevation, that's up to the commission. Obviously, he was, I mean, he was planning on showing it to you, but his computer can't connect, so that's where we are. So it's up to the commission what, how you wanna act this evening.
I mean, it's basically the same design, split face block.
Yep, they're keeping the same materials, and they're
Can you bring it up on your computer?
They're changing their color, yep.
And then pass it around?
Sure.
Yes, Nicholas?
So once the gentleman gets settled, I have a question on, on the original documents that he sent out. Oh, wait. Oh, can I?
Oh, yeah.
Nick.
Okay.
No problems. So, so when I'm looking at, I don't know, SSM-1, which is your color, your color drawing on the back of this packet?
Yep.
I'm just noticing that as you, as you mark out your property to the left of the main building, the dotted line, right, looks like it's, it's moving into the diner next door's parking area?
Oh, that, that was just signifying this, this inset, so.
That, that's not actually a property line?
No.
You're just giving us, kinda, okay?
It was just blowing up that one area.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, because now, I know, when I read it, it said something about the spring when you have all those plants and stuff?
Sure.
So what's gonna happen to them?
In, in the spring? It depends on the planting season, so it depends on when this gets approved, and then when they go, ultimately, if we get through planting and zoning, part of the expansion process in Connecticut is we gotta go to the State Department of Transportation to get an OSTA modification, so even after this, there's a lengthy process with the DOT, so if in fact, they get through all their permits, building permits, say, second quarter of next year, then the planting season for, I guess, the older plants and anything we're proposing would probably be in the fall, depending on their construction schedule.
No, I know, but I'm just saying.
Alice is asking, and
Where are they gonna have it?
The left side of the building where they had their seasonal, seasonal plants for sale.
Oh, for the outdoor storage?
Right.
So, so basically, part of this, right now, the online pickup stalls, the 16 that are there, are kind of right where that outdoor seasonal storage is, and because they have so many parking spaces, we can afford to not only lose the 15, but by moving the online pickup over there, there's less conflict between the two, and they'll still utilize that area basically late spring through the fall for any of the outdoor storage, so they usually have
I know, they put it in the front of the
It's like mulch, and then they have plants and everything else, so those spaces are just basically, from an operational standpoint, that's how they've been operating, and there's no issue.
But I know that from, right now, without the new building, you can go into the
Do you guys need to see this?
It's in the back.
It's in, it is in the back.
Oh, that little thing?
Yeah.
Microscopic. You know, I think that we were surgeons with these little things. You can go in still into the back of, even though you have this new building, can you go in the back like you could before of Walmart?
Off of Kirby Road?
No, yeah, you park over here, or they used to have
Oh, yeah, yep, that's, that's staying the same, where the Garden Center is now, all of that's staying the same.
Okay, 'cause that's where they have their Christmas trees.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's all staying unchanged.
The side door.
Right. Okay.
Okay, I don't have anything. The need for Stuart's condition.
Stuart, do you have any other conditions?
No, it's just a condition, all the staff comments have been addressed, the only condition is Bruce's condition of September 10th, 2025.
So we've got the live stream.
We have to really, as close
There is a Would the condition that the banners be removed that are existing in the front of the building at present? And that is for Murphy's Pub and Sports Bar at 51-14 Shumpike Road.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay.
That was probably done before the column was installed.
Brian's gonna be in abstention.
Okay.
So we need a motion to open up Application 25-19, and then we would make a motion to table it.
Okay, so moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, and now make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we need a motion to open the public hearing for Application 25-18.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Popper?
So is Mr. Slavinsky here? Yep, thank you. No, give it a try.
Give it a try.
We may be surprised.
Sam, do the wires fit yours?
Aye.
Hold your laptop?
I just have all the
These probably are all the plugs.
Is it working again?
It's working.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're waiting to have that go up and see what happens.
He doesn't trigger it, we, we changed the input, so.
You have to change the input?
Yes, so, but it's not him plugging it in that triggers the change, we do. So when we do that, it go
Oh, the stream goes on? Well, we gotta do it, they gotta see.
Yeah, it does. It's not what they plug it in, he plugs it in, and then I have to change the input to get it to read, so when I change the input, it's gonna go off. The stream button's hurt. I, I don't know.
We don't know. It's beyond our pay grade.
Thank you.
So it's when you change the input, that the streaming button blinks? And you have to change the input?
But that's the only way to get it
Right, you have to change the input to recognize that computer.
Okay, hold on.
Right. Right.
See now it went on?
Here we go.
No, there it is, up there.
So is, is it still streaming now, or?
On the stream?
So it went off again?
Oh, it's, went back, you're right.
No, it was just, last week, it was only Matt's computer that did it.
And that's just happened this time, too?
Yeah.
She is back.
It started streaming, and then it just cut out again.
With, with Sam's?
Are we streaming now?
Uh, can you move his mouse around or something? Click for the next slide?
We should be.
You probably gotta do like a shared screen, so they can see this and the video. Yes, we're still live.
Yeah, it was, it was Matt's computer. Matt's computer did it last week.
Okay.
Two weeks ago. So he can't come back again. Or at least he's gotta bring a different computer.
I don't have this time, so I gotta stand here and press a button. Am I good to go?
Oh, yes.
All right. Hello, my name's Sam Slavinsky, I'm the owner of Rev Industries, and me and my wife recently bought 900 Corporate Row. This is the layout of the building. When we bought it, there was a apartment built on the, it's a little bit hard to understand, but the, that whole front part is the apartment, but it's only upstairs, entire bottom part is office space. There was an apartment up there, which was something we were looking for, somewhere where I could have my business and live on the same property. We found out after a, an unfortunate grease fire, that we, that was an approved apartment, so that's what we're trying to do now, is get it approved, because we're the caretakers of the building. We've added a, an egress ladder, you can see it just outside the bedroom, it's, the text is kinda small, and we had to do a couple other things for compliance, adding fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, that sort of thing, which we've done. So, yeah, that's, that's the layout now, in the back is Unit A and Unit B is where my business is, and we're renting out Unit C to a FedEx contractor. This is the parking that's available, just showing that there's plenty of parking for both my business and the apartment. That, on the right side is the front of the building where the, where Corporate Row is, and then there's two spaces as well in the back. Just a little bit about my business, we're a machine shop, we're growing, but it's just two of us, two employees, I run most of the machines, so it's nice to be able to be at home and at work, I can start a part, go up and see my kid and my wife. You know, we bought the building for this purpose, and there's, there are other caretaker quarters in the area, as well as other residential, you know, houses. These are like the responsibilities that were, you know, taken care of as the caretakers, obviously, security, I can be there. We clean the building, all of the maintenance is done by me, fixing the machines and just general building maintenance, and then the landscaping around the building. This is us, family of four, one fur baby and one human baby, and my wife. Reasons we wanna be in Cromwell, especially where we are, we're close to Pearson Park, which is great for our, our child, the school system is great, it's a central location for our business, we're right off Route 9, and there's a lot of outside vendors that we use that are off Route 9. I mean, River Highlands is great, I hike there, and then we love Mitchell's, the stuffed French toast. Yeah, that's it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe you had received my September tenth memo, which was my plan review of Mr. Slavinsky's application. And my app, my review of the application confirms that the proposal is consistent with the zoning regulations definition of caretaker's quarters and I will read that for you.
Yeah, I got more.
Caretaker's quarters is a dwelling used for the residence of a caretaker in connection with another land use, including commercial activity. So by description of what Mr. Slavinsky just gave for what he performs and what the actual commercial activity is, he does meet the spirit of the regulation and I had no further comments or conditions that I would like you to consider. Any question? Any questions?
I'd just like to note for the record that there were comments. Basically, the chief comments were from the fire marshal and he noted that the applicant is working on these things and he has no issues as long as this work gets completed. So can you tell us the status of the, are you done with the fire marshal? Did he see?
Yeah, he did. He came back last week, maybe Monday. I don't remember what day it was, but he came back to check check on everything. So he saw that the, I think the big thing was the fire escape ladder. But yeah, we've added everything, new emergency lighting, so it's all taken care of.
Okay, thank you very much.
I did go, I did go through the definition of terms that we have in here about, you know, caretaker. It's a dwelling used for the residence of a caretaker in connection with another land use, including commercial activity. And then the other one that is, and it only is under self-storage facilities in our zoning regulations. And it says a dwelling for residential, for a resident caretaker and his or her family is permissible as an accessory use, but it's only under self-service in that section of our.
Okay, but we allow them in the industrial zone. You're talking about the self-service regulation.
No, I went through looking under caretakers. My concern is that you are in a build, in a zone that with the child. And there is, I took all kinds of pictures. That's a very busy road. Your back of your of your business, you're having people come in to service your business. There is just all paved area. There is nothing for a child there and people going down. These are some of the cars that are parked with the other businesses. These are all of the other businesses down. One of them is across from your place. And what you are really putting there is you're not a caretaker per se. You are an owner of the property. Therefore, you are the owner of, and you are now trying to have a resident with a child, not as a caretaker. You own the property. So therefore, as far as you being what is called a caretaker, you're living there. So you're not a caretaker. You are.
Well, you're arguing about the definition of a caretaker.
Yes, I am.
You know, so that's what you're arguing about because you're saying that the owner of the property can't be the caretaker, but I don't see that anywhere. So I mean, so.
I understand.
Say that.
I'm saying it because that is a building, a residential home.
Well, that's your interpretation of the definition of a caretaker.
Of a child. With a child.
I'm not arguing about the child. What I'm arguing about is your def, the definition of a caretaker.
I'm just saying is that, you know, you can say a caretaker, so therefore you will own a house. You're a caretaker of the house and not the owner? Not one or the other?
That's not what we're talking. You're both.
You're both, okay. I just feel that having here, and I understand that probably it was constructed, it's a beautiful thing inside from what I understand, that it was done by a construction firm and I'm not sure when he built that. That looks just like a a house. It doesn't look like any commercial buil- building that I've seen. But I think he was in construction. I think he used that maybe to show with marble and things like that how he could build a house. I think he he was a builder, if I'm right.
Yeah, I'm not. So I think he, I don't know if he originally built the apartment for that purpose. I know he he moved down to Florida and he was living there when he was back up here. When we spoke to him, when he was selling the building, we got to speak to him. He said he was staying, he has parents up here, I guess, so he was staying up here to take care of them. I mean, yeah, we didn't, we didn't add a kitchen or we didn't add a ba, we added nothing to it. So it was a full apartment when we moved in.
Right.
And we are, you know, I am the the person that takes care of everything on the property. We, you know, we don't, it's a two-person company, so we don't, we don't hire any of that out. You know, the landscaping or cleaning, any of that, you know, it's all done by us.
And I I can understand that, you know, and I sympathize with you and all, but I'm speaking as a mother, a great-grandmother and things like that, and I'm looking at the child. I'm also looking at the businesses along there that just come up and down that road and they're not expecting to have a child on that road. When, if you're gonna be living there forever and maybe have another child and it runs out. That is not a place really.
But if a child runs out on the street, it's gonna run out on each street.
Well. But no, but do you expect when you go down into a corporate thing that you're gonna have a child run out in front of your car? Okay. That's only my perception and that's how I look at it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to open this up to the public.
Right.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Does any of the public have any comments on this application?
James Demetriades, two seventy-two, Skyview Drive. You know, as I'm hearing this discussion and debate, I think that the the business owner and the property owner wants to be able to, I'm assuming based off your description of business, you and your partner who you employ are there a lot, long hours, kind of a situation where you're building things based off of what orders are coming in. And part of the reason that you chose a property that had what you thought was mixed use was so that you could take care of whatever needs to happen on a more consistent and and long-term basis, that you wanted to kind of work where you lived and lived where you worked. So, I mean, I think when you're thinking about, you know, our zoning regulations and we want to have harmony within our zoning regulations, Bruce has already opined that this meets the definition of caretaker's quarters. I'm seeing a nod, so I think that yes, this is a non, you know, non-conforming original use, but, you know, the property already had the apartment there. I think we have a business owner that is hopefully gonna continue to grow and be successful in their business. Hopefully, he keeps hiring more people, he expands and hopefully, you know, he stays in Cromwell with that business. He has other tenants that are there. I think, you know, if differences of opinion about where where kids are raised aside, which I don't think is our purview, if it meets the definition of caretaker quarter, if it meets the requirements that the fire marshal has said and and the business owner has said that he's meeting them all, I think it's, I think it's something that we should consider. I also think that given where Corporate Row is located, it's not like it's Sabeti Drive. It's located right off a hillside where there are dozens of houses within a hundred yards. So, you know, I and I drove by the property. I thought it was a house. Like I, frankly, I drove past the property and I thought it was a house. It's 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 clearly designed for mixed use or for the appearance of something that kind of has more harmony with the houses on hillside than it does with everything else in Corporate Row. You know, I think from my perspective as mayor, you know, I want to encourage business growth and I want to make sure that, you know, we recognize that different business owners may have different business needs and this seems like a good way to kind of blend together some of the needs that he has to maintain for his other tenants and also hopefully continue to grow his business in town. So thank you for your presentation tonight. Obviously, it's your discretion, but I just want to speak in support of the applicant.
Thanks, dude.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Wait a minute.
Oh, okay. Alright, well, I was, I was gonna allow it.
Oh, we should. Can't close it.
Commissioner.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
So here's my question to Bruce. What are the boundaries that we put or need to think about when we use a caretaker status in an industrial zone? What, what do we, do we look at those if it expands to more industrial zones if something like this comes up? Or if if the use is modified or changed over time, are you gonna be there to say now you can't do that in the caretaker zone?
What would, what would be the modification?
Play, playground set outside.
Playground set would not be a necessary use for in that zone, so it would not be permitted.
I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't. I'm just saying, okay, you're saying it's okay. I understand the definition means that, that's the interpretation. What is the, how he gives it, wants somebody else to stay there. Now it's. But happens in the second generation of this or the third generation. Again, I'm not against it or for it. I'm just trying to understand the application of the regulation, that's all.
So it's a caretaker's quarter, okay? So let me, let me, you talk, let me talk. Don't interrupt me, okay? It's a caretaker's quarter, okay? If he, okay, it's five years from now. The business is doing well and Mr. Slavinsky moves to a house in Cromwell, okay? That apartment is still there. Mr. Slavinsky has one of his workers, okay? One of those workers is now gonna occupy, may occupy that that quarters. What Mr. Slavinsky can't do, and we'll put it on the record, this is not a two-family house, okay? So that's your question. It's not a two-family house. This apartment is meant for a caretaker in an industrial zone. That's the purpose of the apartment. If, you know, five years from now, as I said, Mr. Slavinsky's moved and Mr., he sells the building. He's gone, okay? And some guy, some other person buys it and they decide, well, I got an apartment on the second floor. I'm gonna rent it out. They can't do that. Okay, that's your question. They can't do that, no. That's not the intent of it. The intent of it is, in this building, this is a caretaker's quarter. If this was a two-family house on Main Street, you could do whatever you wanted with it. But because of the nature of where it is and the regulations, this is not gonna be an apartment for rent five years from now. It can't be.
Thank you for that explanation.
Let me, let me just go on that. So what you're saying is, say that he sells it. The person that buys it has to then live in the apartment?
No, the, no, the person that buys it doesn't have to live in the apartment. Whoever lives in the apartment has to be related to a business in the building.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure. So therefore, he has to either be a worker in that business or have a vested interest.
Or he could be the professional caretaker. He doesn't necessarily have to work in the business. His purpose is that he's there to take care of the building.
Okay, so he's being hired as the caretaker of the property. I just wanted to.
No, no, that's.
But also, and as you said, is that like when you have somebody come in with a family and with children, in this, they cannot have an accessory. They can't put up a, can they put up swings in the backyard?
No, I don't believe.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, technically, it wouldn't be permitted in the zone.
Well, I'm just making sure that everybody understands. Also, by allowing this in this one, does that open all the other areas in town?
We allow them in all the industrial zones. That's been part of it. This isn't opening, this isn't setting a precedent.
No, I'm not saying that, but you.
They're allowed, but only by special permit.
By special permit.
So every other.
Okay.
Caretaker apartment that wanted to come in would need a special permit, separate, distinct from. So it, they're decided on a case-by-case basis, that's my point.
So, but you could still have them come in with small children?
Well.
That's when I'm just asking.
We're not, we're not regulating that. We don't, we don't regulate the nature.
No, I'm just saying is, but I'm just saying is.
We can't say old people can't be caretakers, so we can't say families can't be caretakers, so.
We're regulating the use of the space.
Use of the space on the zone.
Not necessarily the age of the property.
Right, and I understand. I mean, we had a, this is and things like that, but, you know. Anybody else that would like to come before us and speak on this? Anybody else on the?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Close.
None?
Opposed to close the public hearing?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you said all in.
Nothing. That was to close the public hearing.
Close it, that's fine.
Alright, so now I'll make a motion to approve application number twenty-five eighteen. Application for special permit under section four Town of Cromwell zoning regulations to apla, to allow for caretaker's quarters at nine hundred Corporate Row. The only condition is that this is for a caretaker of the property. It is not considered a residential rentable dwelling unit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
One. You are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, you can take down your public hearing sign tomorrow.
I'm waiting for the school bus to go down. They can't even.
Okay.
Whatever. I mean, everyone has their rights.
Next application, I'll make the motion to open a public hearing for application twenty-five twenty-six. Special permit under section four C two Town of Cromwell zoning regulations to obtain a liquor permit at one fifty Sabeti Drive. Application is Jennifer Marazzi. Owner is Randa LLC.
Give me a second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're up.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Marazzi. I'm the owner of the, well, soon to be owner of the eighteen fifty-one Kitchen and Cocktail Bar at one fifty. I've been calling it Sabet. I hear everyone else saying Sabeti. I'm not sure which one is correct. Applying, applying for a liquor license. The restaurant will be New American Cuisine, so it's American food influenced by global cuisines. I currently hold a liquor permit in Colchester at another restaurant. I've held that permit for eight years with no violations, so it's a very safe environment and we look forward to opening there. I'm not sure what else I should provide for information.
No, no staff comments.
No staff comments. Any changes to the existing footprint of the building or the pre-existing operation of the building?
No, other than the fact we added one stall into the ladies', the women's bathroom.
That's fine.
Yeah, we're just a lot of deep cleaning and renovating.
Anybody have any questions?
And also, Madam Chair, Ms. Marazzi stated that her new sign would occupy the existing space that was the previous sign, so it would be the same size and same location.
Okay, I think that the signs have always been there and just changed.
Yeah, same wooden sign. I'm just gonna put a placard on it.
And what's the name of your?
The eighteen fifty-one, which is the year that Cromwell was incorporated. Yes. Historical reference.
Which restaurant in Colchester do you operate?
Fresca, Bar and Grill.
Mexican.
Mexican.
Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this?
Okay, seeing none, any commissioners' comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-five twenty-six. Special permit under Town of Cromwell zoning regs to obtain a liquor permit at one fifty Sabeti Drive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Welcome to Cromwell. Look forward to it.
Didn't we just, we just did this like about a year ago?
Somebody else was another applicant.
I know, I know that they.
Yeah, they, they didn't work out so well. Okay, so the application twenty-five twenty-two. I know.
Oh, really?
I'm just, I'm just asking, application twenty-five twenty-two is.
One hundred.
No, that's, that's the light bulb.
He said.
That's gonna be continued to?
Yeah.
Because they didn't have.
No, we didn't open it. No, we didn't open it.
Right, so I'm gonna just do nothing with it?
Nothing, that's right. We didn't open it.
Alright, next is application twenty-five twenty-three. I'll make a motion to open that public hearing. And that's application to amend special permit section three point six point C four of the Town of Cromwell zoning regs to modify the master site plan at one hundred Berlin Road. The applicant is Alpine Residential LLC and the owner is M three sixty Berlin Land Holdings LLC.
Second on that.
I'd just like to note while the, the. Yeah.
Aye.
So I'd like to just note for the record that this is an application to modify the existing master plan at one hundred Berlin Road. So obviously, the master plan is a concept plan. You'll note from there, there's general information showing the general location, the site plan information. There's kind of a drawing, a concept plan for the architectural elevation. If if the commission is to approve the modifications that are presented tonight, the applicant will go back to the drawing board and prepare an engineered site plan. They'll also be back with actual architectural plans for the buildings. What we're approving tonight is the concept, okay? The concept, the changes to the site plan, that's really the big part of the, what we're approving, okay? And they'll, if that's approved, then they go back to the drawing board. They have their engineers draw a new site plan, which is obviously gonna be very detailed. It's gonna have parking, it's gonna have utilities, it's gonna have drainage, it's gonna have everything. And they'll come back with architectural elevations of the proposed buildings, which will also have everything. So what we're, what we're seeing tonight is just the concept. And that's, just want to make that clear so everybody understands that. There are, you're not gonna see a final site plan, you're not gonna see final architectural elevations, 'cause they have to prepare all those.
And you're not gonna see what it's gonna be made out of.
So I just want to note that. Yeah. So they're, they're here this evening. We're very excited to have them here and they'll be making their presentation.
Yeah, just for the record, we're gonna pass out a hard copy of our PowerPoint presentation. And Stuart, I did plug it into the laptop.
Yep.
We're on?
Let's see if yours shuts it off.
Oh, sure. Attorney Megan Hope, Alter Pearson and Hope for the Record representing the applicant. Megan Hope, H O P E.
Megan, is the mic on?
Tap it.
Tap it. You can pull it out so it's closer to you.
Okay. Get on the move.
James, are we still streaming? Thank you very much.
Alright.
It is Matt's computer.
Alright, again for the record, my name's Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Alter, Pearson and Hope in Glastonbury. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Alpine Residential LLC. They're contract purchasers for one hundred Berlin Road and the adjacent lot fifteen R Christian Hill Road. We've submitted an application to amend the previously approved master plan. A couple of housekeeping items. We did send out the required notice. As this is a public hearing, we sent out notice to the abutters. I did submit the certificate of mailing to Stuart's office, so he has those originals. And also for the record, we did post the sign and I'll hand that over to Stuart for the record.
Thank you.
Alright, with me here tonight representing the applicant, we have Todd Tuffler and Nick Rosato, both of Alpine Residential LLC. We have Seeland Pather, who's our architect from Benfield Architects, and Rock Iman, who's doing the PowerPoint clicking for me. He's our professional engineer with SLR. Briefly, I want to go through the team's experience. We're very experienced in residential communities. We're operating currently in four states. We have thousands of residential units that we're currently owning and operating. We also have. Um, that we're currently, uh, owning and operating. We also have retail components in many of those developments as well. And we're in the process, uh, similar to this project in other communities where we're getting approvals, uh, for additional units, uh, to be added to our portfolio. All of our properties, um, are operated and managed by other arms of our, um, our operation of our business. That's Beachhold and South Oxford Management. You go to the next slide. Rock, thank you. Um, again, our managing partners, uh, William Rosato and Todd Tuffler, who's here tonight. So should you have any questions about their experience or how we, um, develop and manage these properties, we'd be happy, uh, to answer any of those questions. But, uh, what I wanted to, uh, uh, convey to the commission was that we do have an applicant who's very experienced, um, with, uh, different, uh, multifamily, uh, projects. Next slide, please. Again, as I mentioned, we have Beachhold Residential, which is an arm of the overall company, um, and they, um, have different members who are managing that within, all within the same building as Alpine. Um, but, uh, they own and manage the multifamily properties. Over six, sixteen thousand units, um, is all happening, uh, within the umbrella of our, of our company. Next slide, please. Uh, South Oxford Management will be the entity that will be managing, uh, this specific project, um, in Cromwell. Um, they manage, as I mentioned, uh, over sixteen thousand units, over seventy-two properties in six states. We will, uh, be using our local Connecticut team, 'cause we have, uh, many properties in Connecticut, so the local, uh, team will be managing this site. And they'll be involved as we move, um, into some of the more finer details that Stuart has, had mentioned with the site. As we're looking at the amenity program, unit layout and design, um, of the individual units and site layout. We're gonna be using, uh, the knowledge that our management, uh, team has, because they know exactly what that renter in Connecticut is looking for and expecting, um, within a development. So we're lucky enough to have them along during the design process, so we can make sure that, um, our, um, our product will be correct for the market. Next slide, please. Okay, you'll be hearing, um, a little bit later from our architect, Sealan. I did just wanna put a little bit of his portfolio. He's also very experienced, uh, uh, Beanfield Architecture, uh, does projects, um, all over the place, all over Connecticut. Very experienced, um, in being able to deliver a high-quality product. Um, just wanted to show you, uh, some of his portfolio, 'cause it's very impressive. But again, another member of our development team who has a lot of experience, um, in this space. Next slide, please. Alright, so we do need an experienced architect, obviously, because we have a very challenging site. I know everyone's familiar with the existing conditions. At a hundred, uh, Berlin Road, we have the old hotel and I have some existing conditions. This is a view, an aerial view from, uh, Berlin Road looking north. Those houses at the top of the screen are sitting on Christian Hill Road. Um, we obviously have a bladed property. Um, we're having, uh, trouble controlling access to the property. It's been boarded up and people are breaking in, so we've had longstanding issues with this property. You can go to the next slide, please, Rock. Again, I know everyone's familiar with what it looks like from Berlin Road, um, but it is a property that needs to be demolished and redeveloped, and I think that's clear from these pictures. And on the inside, it's also, um, very, in a very poor shape. We have a lot of mold issues, pipes that have burst. Um, also people that have been, you know, living in there and doing things they're not supposed to be doing, so the site is in a very poor condition, uh, currently. And so, uh, we're hoping that this amendment to the master plan can help this project, uh, move forward. Next slide, please. Alright, I just wanted to reorient everybody with the site. I know we're all familiar with it, um, and just to orient you, on the screen in front of you, to the left side is Berlin Road. Um, and over to the right side is Christian Hill. To the top of your screen, um, is I ninety-one and the ramps that access it. So, um, our existing site is twelve point seven acres. That includes the two properties, a hundred Berlin Road, which is closer to ninety-one, and then fifteen R Christian Hill Road. Um, there obviously are two main existing structures on the site. One is that existing hotel building closer to the Berlin Road, and then the structure closer to Christian Hill Road is a parking garage. Um, the, the site quote, uh, the site slopes, uh, quite dramatically. Uh, it's about elevation twenty-three down by Berlin Hill, Berlin Road, and it's rising upwards Christian Hill Road. About sixty-four by the time you get, um, to the top of the site. Couple other features I wanted to point out. That yellow dash line that you're seeing is the limit of the hundred-year flood zone. Um, pretty much the entire site that we're proposing to develop is outside of that, except for a little portion, um, in that, uh, southeastern corner, um, of the site. We do have some wetlands as well. Um, those are highlighted in the blue shaded color. Um, those are, uh, entirely on that fif- fifteen R Christian Hill Road. And then Coles Brook obviously is sort of clipping the easterly side, um, of, of the site. And just for a little bit of context, everything, uh, to the left side of your screen is obviously in that commercial district. We have Lowe's just to the bottom of your screen, and then the Christian Hill, uh, Road neighborhood, uh, is all single-family residential. Next slide, please. Sorry. So this is a picture of the existing zoning map. Um, both sites are currently in the mixed-use zone. That was changed when we originally applied for the zone change and master plan back in twenty twenty-two. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. That brown color is the mixed-use zone. That's already been changed. Um, everything to the right is that R twenty-five residential, and then the green color is the highway business, which is all that commercial core. Um, that's on either side of, of Berlin Road. Next slide, please. Okay, um, just wanted to do a quick recap of the previous approvals. I was involved, um, in the project, uh, with Lexington Partners back in twenty twenty-two. So as Stuart had mentioned, when you're, um, applying for a project in the mixed-use zone, it is a two-step process as far as zoning goes. And that's exactly how we proceeded back in twenty twenty-two. We came to you originally for, um, a zone change and a master plan, and that was approved on, um, I remember, Cinco de Mayo, May fifth. And then after that, um, we went and got our wetlands permit for work within the upland review area. And then we came back to the commission with all those details, like Stuart had mentioned. Um, we, uh, applied for the special permit and the site plan for that final plan. We had elevations, um, all the details on landscaping, parking, et cetera. We also got the flood zone, um, permit as well for that limited work we have within the flood zone. Um, so that was all completed in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, we did go to the town council and get approval for a tax abatement as well. And as part of that tax abatement, um, it was agreed to, to provide, uh, ten percent of the multifamily units as affordable for forty years at the eighty percent AMI. Remember, that was something we had talked about at the zoning level, but it was codified in the tax abatement with the town council. So, um, very quickly, I just wanna remind you what the approved site plan was and then show you what our proposal is. Um, because we are amending that original master plan, I think it's, um, important to sort of remind you what you previously approved, so that you have context, um, on how we're deviating from it and how we're staying consistent with it. So this was the approved plan that the commission approved back in twenty twenty-two. Again, Berlin Road is on the left side of your screen. Christian Hill Road is on the right side of your screen, and, and ninety-one is to the top of the screen. So starting at the left, that orange building, um, was approved as the commercial building, and then as we moved into the site, the building started stepping up as you moved towards Christian Hill Road. Sort of working with that existing topography, um, that's existing on site. So we had, uh, residential, uh, units, apartments are all those purple buildings in the middle of the site. Um, we were maintaining a portion of that existing parking garage that's closer to Christian Hill Road. Part of it was coming down, part was staying. And then we also had townhomes, um, sort of, uh, buffering Christian Hill Road from the rest of the development. So those are those small rectangles, um, on the right side of the screen. A couple of other things I wanted to point out. We only had one, uh, access point, and that's from Berlin Road. Uh, that's at that, uh, left side of your screen towards the bottom. Uh, we did have access from Christian Hill Road, but it was gated and only for emergency access. So there was no, uh, vehicular traffic that could come in through that access point unless you were an ambulance or fire truck, uh, during an emergency. We did provide for, uh, pedestrian access from Christian Hill to the open space. Uh, so when you're seeing those woods sort of on the bottom portion of the screen, uh, we were providing a public access easement so that, um, people from Christian Hill Road could come and walk within the open space. That's something that's, um, currently happening on site now. It's a place that people come to walk their dog, so we were gonna codify that with, um, uh, access easement rights, so that people come and walk, um, within that, that area. Um, but again, uh, when the board approved this master plan, you felt that it met the spirit of the mixed-use zone, which was to have a mix of commercial and residential units, to have that live, work, play, um, component. That's in the, the policy section of your, your MU zoning district. Uh, next slide, please. This is our approved, um, our approved site plan. Again, uh, much of it is very consistent with what you previously approved. We have the singular access point on Berlin Road. The access point on Christian Hill Road is still emergency access only. It's gated. We do have a pedestrian, pedestrian connection from Christian Hill Road to, um, that open space, so that is still consistent. Uh, regarding, uh, the buildings, we continue to have commercial square footage along, uh, Berlin Road, that rectangular building on the left side of your screen. That's the commercial building. And then as we move into the site, again, we continue to have the, uh, residential apartment buildings. We've modified some of the, um, amenity space, uh, but we still continue to have courtyards and pools, uh, and other active amenity spaces. I'd say one of the major changes, uh, with this plan is that we've eliminated the parking garage. Uh, we previously had, uh, we were maintaining portion of the existing parking garage, and we also were constructing a new parking garage under some of the multifamily buildings. So all the parking garage components have been eliminated from this plan, and we've opted instead to do all surface parking. Uh, my clients in this instance feel that the surface parking is safer and something more expected for our tenants, as opposed to being in, uh, parking garage or subsurface, specifically in this, this suburban type, um, area of Connecticut. Another, um, positive aspect of the change in this site plan is that, uh, fire trucks now are able to drive, uh, totally around the building. If you remember before, because we had the parking garages, there was limited access. You could only get on two or three sides of the buildings. Um, so this is, we feel like, a big enhancement from the previous plan as far as like a circulation, um, component for, um, for emergency response vehicles. Um, okay, next slide, please. Alright, I wanted to provide this cross-section. Uh, the cross-section on the top was one that we showed in twenty twenty-two as part of those approved plans. Um, and then the cross-section on the bottom is for our current development. I thought it would be helpful to just remind you of the maximum height and the building massing that you had previously approved. So if you're looking at the screen, again, Berlin Road is to the left side of the screen, and Christian Hill is off towards the right side of the screen. So when we start on the left, we're seeing that we're still maintaining that one-story commercial along Berlin Road. As you move more to the right, um, we are proposing, uh, five-story residential building. Uh, we previously had four stories in this portion of the site. Um, but you had approved a maximum of five stories. As you move, uh, further to the right, we have the one-story amenity building, which again, uh, was on the previous plan. And then as you go all the way towards the right, to, towards Christian Hill Road, you had approved previously five stories, and we are maintaining five stories. What we've done, obviously, is eliminated the, um, garage parking story, and it's just all residential now, 'cause that parking has moved, um, to surface. But, uh, the maximum building height approved before was fifty-six, and we're, we are not exceeding that maximum building height. So we've, uh, maintained that maximum height that was previously approved in twenty twenty-two. Okay, can you do the next slide, please? Alright, in case you're, um, would like it more in a, a chart, uh, scenario, what I did here was create a chart with our approved plan, um, in the column, um, in the center, and then our proposed plan, um, on the right. And this just goes down through each of the, the, um, the different aspects of the plan, so that you can compare them. Um, we decreased commercial square footage slightly from thirty-one thousand to thirteen thousand. Uh, regarding residential units, you had previously approved two hundred and seventy-four units. Um, two hundred and fifty-four of those were rental units, and then we had the twenty townhomes. So we're now decreasing that overall down to two hundred and sixty-seven units. Those all will be, uh, rental apartment units in the two buildings, as I just showed you. Uh, parking has increased, um, from four eighty-seven to five thirty-three parking spaces. And obviously, as I previously mentioned, those are all gonna be surface spaces, and there'll be that three hundred and sixty-degree access around all of the buildings. Amenity space has decreased slightly, but really has just changed with the change, uh, slight change in footprint and layout of the buildings, but we're still maintaining the amenity building, the pool, the courtyards, and obviously the walking trails and the passive space, um, located within fifteen, um, R Christian Hill Road. Again, the maximum building height, uh, we have not exceeded what was previously approved. Previously, the max was five stories, fifty-six feet, and we're maintaining that. From an elevation standpoint, we're actually a little bit lower by point six four feet, but we're essentially, uh, maintaining what was previously approved. And again, um, we are, uh, maintaining the pedestrian and emergency access only from Christian Hill Road, which I know was, um, something critical from the previous approval. So I just put together this chart, uh, as a way to compare, um, what was approved in twenty twenty-two and what we're proposing, uh, currently today. Alright, with that, I'm going to, uh, pass it over to the architect, and, um, then we'll pass it over to the engineer.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Sealan Pather. I'm a principal at Beanfield Architecture.
Sealan, excuse me, do you have a card? Does everybody have cards that's gonna speak?
No, but you want me to write it?
Yeah, if you wanna write it down, give it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so our firm is based in South Newark. Our mixed-use port, in Connecticut. Uh, our mixed-use port, uh, portfolio extends from New York to Massachusetts, with the majority of work being Connecticut. We're very familiar with multifamily development. Um, we've worked in, we haven't worked in Cromwell with you before, but we're all around, including, uh, very close Farmington and West Hartford. Um, and just as an aside, our senior project architect, who couldn't be here today, grew up in Cromwell and used to work in that existing building. He'll be at the next meeting. Um, as an office, we've always been interested in place-making, in creating communities in our work. We try to create places that people see as homes, not just apartments. Uh, somewhere they feel like they're part of a community. That's part of the concept we try to embrace as we approach every development. Uh, so that's the conceptual approach, and this project was no different. There was a good roadmap for this project with the previously approved concept, and you've seen that. So some design, salient design similarities. Megan's been through a few of these, but just in terms of the way we approached its design. Both proposals have retail component lining the street with large residential, with a large residential development behind, albeit the new proposal has smaller retail components, slightly smaller. Both proposals have separated the building mass to address the topography of the site. Three buildings slowly marching up the site. Uh, both proposals preserve the eastern wooded area of the site, walking trails and outdoor space that is accessible to neighbors of the development of Christian Hill. Uh, the scale and massing of the residential buildings in both proposals are similar, and you'll see that in the three Ds. Because the next slide, Rock, is probably better for this discussion. Thank you. Uh, the previous proposal lined the edges of the properties with townhouses. Those are removed in the current proposal. The setback of the main building, um, from Berlin Road is about two hundred feet, eighty foot to the retail. It's about two hundred and sixty feet. Did I get that right? Four hundred and sixty feet? Sorry, two hundred and sixty feet to the, to Christian Hill at the rear. So much larger setback than the previous proposal. Um, and the current proposal expands the outdoor amenity courtyards available to residents. So that was a big part of our design. Uh, Megan suggested that our, our many space, interior many space is slightly smaller, but the outdoor many spaces are much larger. And there was a, a salient design move to create these pockets of spaces as you walk up the site. So here you see the retail building lines the street. It serves as a foreground element that lines Berlin Road, and, and is consistent with the approach of other retail buildings in the street. There's parking in the foreground, then the retail building. And what this retail building will serve to do is control the visual scale of the development. When you're on Berlin Road, your view angle will be obscured by that retail building, so that, that serves the development. Um, one basic design approach here is to create a series of streets. So what you're looking at is we looped streets all around the site. I'm sorry, I brought a pointer, but the pointer doesn't work on this screen, so obviously, I'll have to describe it. But when you, when I say we created streets, you have a street, you have parking, sidewalk, some planting, uh, a front yard, and then the building. This is consistent of urban planning, good urban planning, just creating streets in an environment to create a sense of community. And what we will do on this, uh, development is create direct entries. So you'll, each of those apartments will have a front door essentially from their living room out to that street. So it'll feel like a townhome. Though, although it's not a, not a townhome, it's an apartment building, it'll feel like that, 'cause they'll have a direct entry door all around, which you couldn't do before. But now that we've surrounded and looped the street around, around the entire development, you'll be able to do that. And you'll be able to park on different parts of the site and access your unit easier. You won't have to go to the front entry. So we saw that as a, as a plus. Uh, some numbers here that, we call that building A. Some numbers here that, we call that building A, the lower building, and building B is the upper building, and the space in between them is the central courtyard. Building A is 10, has a courtyard of 10,000 square feet. Building B, oh, sorry. Let me just go to the numbers, Rock, and then I'll come back. Thank you. Building A has 10,000 square foot, 10,000 square foot courtyard. Building B has 6,000 square foot courtyard. And that central courtyard is expansive, it's 12,000 square feet. The internal amenities, Megan will make those numbers. So next one, thanks, Rock. Well, that's great, that's new technology. So we have three courtyards, and that was the principal idea, like I said, of the design. And what this gives us an opportunity to do is create varied experiences for the community. So just for example, and these are all our projects at the bottom of the screen, what that means, for example, is that courtyard A could be an active courtyard with games and so on, and maybe grilling stations in here. Courtyard B is the pool courtyard, and it looks, could look something like this. And courtyard C could be more inclusive courtyard, quieter and so on. So it's a, that opportunity created by having these three spaces creates a more vibrant place for the community. Next one. Again, our projects. Another central design idea here is you always want to try and create a sense of arrival. You want to feel that you've arrived at a place, and this, you know, you belong in the, and it is a place. And this is what this seeks to do, is building A is what we call the arrival building. That's where you have, where you have your leasing offices, and you'll have people greeting you. You'll have future resident parking, that's where you arrive in sight. You know that's the entrance. And then, once you do that, there's an opportunity for drama. Like you could create a glass building, and you look all the way through and see the pool beyond. Or this one is slightly more obscure, but on this one, we create a deck above that overlooks the pool. So it's early days in the design, we'll get there, but just the idea, that's the idea behind the small buil, the smaller building between the two large buildings.
So Sealan, can I ask you a question? So what you're showing us is, these are kind of the, the buildings, so to speak, in front of the pool.
In front of the pool. The ri, the arrival building, we, we call it, we're going to call it the arrival building because that's where you will arrive at the development. And often, these buildings have the branding of the development, and we'll choose that. And again, it's early days, we'll go to that with our brand, with branding department. But it sets a tone for what you see afterwards.
There's a, there's a vast difference between those two buildings. I mean, which, which way are you leaning?
I just literally picked those two from our portfolio. And next time I have, we come before you, we'll have a really good answer for you on that. But I, if I would, if I were forced to say something today, I would say something like that. Do you like that one? Is that the right answer? These are just typical unit plans, a mix of ones, twos, and three bedrooms. Highly amenitized buildings, you know, have everything you associate with a high-end apartment building, trash chute, internalized trash chutes to attract trash compactor, elevators, obviously your egress and two stair cores, but a highly amenitized building. And this is the fifth floor, it's just, this, we put this slide in to indicate initial thoughts on massing. And what we did was we pulled back the entire fifth floor, so it's recessed, it's set back about five feet from the face. Again, to control the mass, provides terraces for the upper floors. It's a nice design element, we think. Oh, I realized I had this in my deck. The one thing I noticed when Megan brought this up the first time was that, sorry, don't, don't be fooled by the scale, this, this is not the same scale as that in terms of drawing scale. You can see we cut the courtyard here to fit it all on one page. This one's not cut, so although it appears bigger, this level here is the same as that level there, but slightly, slightly lower. And this is the, the massing, this shows the previous development and the one that we're proposing. Again, early days in the design, but you see the massing is similar. We started with a vernacular here and the architecture that attempts to modulate the facade and break up the massing. And what I mean by that is that you've taken what is essentially a flat facade and broke it up into, to individual elements with balconies and a recessed upper floor, and that creates visual interest. We have tools or elements of, in the architectural vernacular here that we'll come back to the next time and show you what those evolve into. But items like the retail building, the direct entry at the street, the courtyards, the rival building, and the fact that we have three different buildings to work with, all of this provide opportunities for interesting architecture. And we'll delve into that the next go-around at, with the architectural set.
Good evening, just for the record. Rock Emmend, Senior Civil Engineer with SLR National Corporation out of 99 Realty Drive, Cheshire, Connecticut. I'll talk a little bit about the site plan, but I'm also the, the slide deck man. So I'll be doing both, I guess. Just some things I want to touch on, I'm more of a numbers guy altogether. So as you can see by this particular site plan, as well as the previous site plan, the biggest difference between the two from a site-planted perspective is obviously the parking. The biggest thing I want you guys to realize about the parking is the, the density of the parking. So previously, under the proposed, approved condition, it was a 1.5 space per unit baseline per the regulations with a mixed-use portion for the retail space. This, they're following the, kind of the, the land and way of doing things. I don't have a better way to say it, but two spaces per unit. That is the biggest difference between that development and this development when it comes to parking. So as you can see, it kind of feels like the site plan is bigger than the other one, but actually, from an impervious perspective, they're almost dead nuts the same, which I thought was crazy. The approved plan, these are from the, the Drange Report. So under existing conditions with the existing hotel space, there's about 303,000 square feet of impervious for 55% of both properties. The approved was 275,300, about 50% of the property. And actually, under this proposal, it's 276,000, also about 50, 50% of the property. So they're about 1,000 square feet away from each other, even with just the transference from going to a parking garage to parking. So from a stormwater perspective, we're still decreasing the amount of overall impervious that's on the site. So we're going to be, when we come for site plan approval, we'll be dealing with stormwater quality and quantity at that point. And then just overall, as it was kind of iterated, this is much more of a safer plan. Parking garages, you know, the, the parking garage itself, it really comes down to different areas for people to either, you know, hide in a stairwell or just, you know, darker places. This allows for us to both control the lighting of the property as, as well as control the, the overall safety. It was iterated that we're going to be making sure that there's correct circulation throughout the property for fire access. They'll, obviously, you can see that there is plenty of access around the building. We're going to be providing fire lanes as required, as well as we're going to be providing specifically ADA-accessible spaces throughout the development to make sure that we're complying both with ADA as well as the building code to make sure that we are being, you know, equal opportunity as well as meeting all the standards. As we kind of hop around, we're also looking at the general topography. One of the biggest differences between the approved plan and this plan, obviously, again, is the parking garage. The parking garage was embedded into the slope. You have a, one section of parking garage that's embedded in the slope. We're modifying this to essentially get a better earthwork. We're working with the general topography. So you can see in, in those cross-sections, there's sort of the stepping as they're going with the buildings. The previous application actually had almost one consistent building going across, and you're kind of keying in the slope. This allows for, as Sealan was articulating, the different communal spaces for the amenity spaces. Those specifically are huge community spaces that'll make this area much more vibrant for the residents. Additionally, obviously, we have the retail space, which is going to be very much seen from Berlin Road. That, in and of itself, there, there's a different train of thought when you think about, you know, a building really close to the road. It's kind of like, oh, you're, you're putting yourself in front of there versus a parking lot. A parking lot, surprisingly enough, at least in my experience, it actually generates more traffic when you see more cars there because you're like, oh, why are these people here? So it, it's almost sort of counterintuitive, but your brain kind of brings you over there. So that's another reason why this particular plan kind of anchors the, the area around Berlin Road versus the pre, the previously approved plan, to kind of tie everything together and, you know, activate these spaces. I know that it's going to come out when we go through architecture in the, the site plan approval or the site plan application. You know, these are going to be highly articulated space, or highly articulated architecture. This is going to be a high-end product for Cromwell. And this is going to be a high-end development specifically for Cromwell that I believe, you know, the site planning is very well laid out. The utilities will be, you know, very well enforced, especially, you know, coordinating with the Cromwell Fire District. Specifically, the, the water main that's currently serving the existing property is essentially inoperable. You know, they're going to be providing new water services to this property. They're going to essentially have to relocate an existing trunk line, sanitary line, to make sure that this can function. These are large items to make sure that everyone in this development can have a great Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Maybe even Thursday, possible. Maybe if they go to Murphy's Pub. I don't know, maybe I'm ranting a little bit. I think that's kind of it from a site plan perspective. Obviously, once again, we're just kind of giving you guys a concept. This is master plan approval. And we're just trying to give you guys kind of a gauge as where, where we're going previous, from the approved project to this project. So any feedback whatsoever from you guys as we move towards a site plan submission is very beneficial. And obviously, you know, I've been working this town for god knows how long now, but your comments and concerns mean very much to both myself as well as the developer. So if you do have any questions, obviously, we're happy to address them either here or during the site plan approval process. Tossing it to the attorney.
All right, again, for the record, Megan Hope with Alter Pearson and Hope. So the next step in our process, I've identified on, on the screen in front of you, but we're currently, obviously, tonight attempting to amend the master plan. Following this, we will have SLR and Beanfield fully design the site plans and the architecture plans will then come back here for approval on that site plan and special permit. We did have a wetlands permit that was previously approved. We may need to amend that depending on the work within the upland review area. We may not. So if we do need an amendment to that, we'll obviously do that before we come back here. Following that, we'll get our connection with WPCA. We have already confirmed that we do have enough sewer and water capacity for the project. So that's already been confirmed. We will then have to go back to the town council to assign the approved tax amendment to our, our entity, or tax abatement, rather, to our entity. There were some dates in there when construction had to happen by, when demo had to happen by, so those obviously need to be amended because we're past those dates. We have been in the OSTA process since 2022, on and off. We do think that that full certificate process will conclude shortly, but that is in progress, and obviously, we need an approval from OSTA prior to being able to start construction of the buildings. And then, when we do start construction, I did put a, a general timeline on how that would proceed. First, obviously, we would do abatement and demolition. We anticipate that that would start at the end of quarter one in 2026. We would then install all the ENS controls, do the grading, and then we would do the construction of the buildings, probably starting from Berlin Road and working towards Christian Hill. But we think all of those buildings would sort of come online sort of around the same time, around quarter one of 2028. So that's sort of our general timeline. But again, we're on step one of that process and looking for, obviously, approval of this amendment to the master plan so that we can proceed with the more detailed plans that come within this process. So that concludes our presentation. I obviously know this is a public hearing, so we're happy to answer any questions from the public or from the commission. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the commission, would you guys like to ask questions first or would you rather hear from the public first? I'd rather, okay. All right, so I'm going to open this up to the public at this point. Anyone that would like to make comments, please come to the mic, give your name and address for the record. Do we have a sign-in sheet or no?
No, but I'll put one up here.
My name is Eugenia Falco, and I live at 20 Christian Hill Road. So some of my biggest concerns is the height of the building as compared to the height of the road. The last time this was approved, the fourth floor was like eye level to my house. And now we got another floor, or actually, I guess it's the same floor because you're taking out the garage, but I'm still going to have a fifth floor right directly in front of my house. And that concerns me. The other thing I have a concern with is buffer zone. You know, I know we talked about a buffer zone before, and I'm still concerned about that, so I would like to have that buffer zone because literally, that little triangular piece is my house. And I'd also like to know where, where the public entrances to the wet area. I don't know if it's that little strip off of Christian Hill Road. That would be between Rod and John's house. Or right there, okay. So that's directly across the street. Okay. And is there any contour changes to the back of the property at all? Or is that going to be left? There is some contour changes. So I guess I'd like to know what those are. So I would like to see a cross-section of a site with elevations, not high little elevations. That's what I'd like to really see and see how it's going to affect me. So those are some of my concerns. And I take it there's no retail on the first floor at all anymore? Because, because wasn't there retail the first time around?
What we'd like to do is ask your questions, and then when everyone else has had their time to speak, the attorney can come back and address those questions and, and do them all at once rather than a back and forth. Thank you.
All right, and I think that was it, except that I had sent these questions to Nick. Nick? Nick never answered my email. And then I tried calling them, nobody answered the phone, not even an answering machine. So I thought that was rather weird, and I just thought I'd present that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patricia Dickinson. I live at 31 Coles Road. I'd like to know where the sewer line is and beyond that was never supposed to be touched because it's, goes into the wetlands. And the brook is mostly on my side. They don't have much of the brook on their property. So how far is that parking coming down now to the brook? The way there, it's edging. So I would say I'm, we own most of the brook besides my fa, you know, the, our, the property next door to us, too. And another thing is, if they open it to the public to come to use their walking space, where is that walk? How far down is the walking space coming? And where are the public going to park when they come to use their walking areas? Because I don't think they can use that strip between those two houses. I think they only have 17 feet there for a walk space. So are they going to be able to cut all the pro, all the trees down on their side of the property along, you know, where the brook would be? Supposedly, the brook is on our side. We own on the, both sides of the brook. So, I mean, those are my concerns because I'm on the, oh, yes. And then the lighting, we, when the lions were there, I had to go. I didn't come to the town, I went to them personally because their lights shine directly into my whole house on the side. Because I'm at their, almost like the level, you know, because I am up higher. So the lighting is a concern, so it doesn't shine on other properties. We had problems with lulls shining in to the, through the woods. I think because there's woods, uh-uh. And I went up to my kitchen one night, and it was, I couldn't, I was blinded. I said, oh my God. So the next day, I went over, and they did go right out and have them down on their own property, not coming onto my property. Those are my concerns. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Chris Light from One North Road. I basically grew up in the neighborhood for, lived there for 55 years now. Grew up on Christian Hill Road and I live right around the corner on One North Road, so familiar with the area. And, uh, I'm looking forward to having the eyesore gone and it looks like a nice, nice plan. I do have some concerns. One, especially for the residents on Christian Hill Road, as far as the elevation goes, the height and the visibility and what kind of screening they're going to be able to have. I think it would be nice when you do come back with the conceptual rendering that they get a view, a conception view from Christian Hill Road that will give them a good idea of what they will be looking at. I agree with Mrs. Dickinson's comments about the lights too. So I hope there's appropriate screening all around because the grade, the level of the parking lot, at least now, we do get headlights shining through, to, into the people's windows and I mine, even mine, all the way across the lot into One North Road. And the, um, the scope of the plan, I always had concerns about having the potential of, you know, 500 cars coming and going from 372, which is already very congested. And what it's going to be now with that, plus the, uh, commercial business there, it's going to be a lot of traffic. And, and I know we've said that the entrance to Christian Hill Road is going to maintain emergency only. My concern is that down the road, if there's so much traffic in and out from Berlin Road, that someone's going to say, well, it's a residential area, residential units. We need to open up that drive to Christian Hill Road. And that's going to create a problem for the residents there, so I have that concern. The other thing is the grading from the parking lot up to Christian Hill Road. I don't know what the elevation is there at the very back of the property right now. It's a very steep hill there. So it would be nice, as Mrs. Falco commented, that we have an elevation view of that to see what that difference is from Christian Hill down to that parking lot. So that's my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hector Nova, 22 Christian Hill. As the same, I'm going to get affected with this, no construction. Always is welcome something new like this, but you also have to protect us as a resident. That is residents that are over 80 years in the area and they're going to get affected very bad. So my concern is how you can guarantee the access of the emergency is going to be only access for the emergency. Because eventually you're going to deal for over 600 cars traffic around that building. Two cars per apartment is going to give a lot of traffic. So how you can guarantee us that it's going to be access only for the emergency?
They're going to answer your question. We're not going to answer it now.
I don't know.
They'll answer it, yeah. After, after everybody speaks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
I know, I know. I'm your frequent flyer tonight, James Dimitriatus, 272 Skyview Drive. First of all, I want to thank the new owners for their proposal. You know, this has been an eyesore on the town for a number of years. In fact, I think just yesterday, an Urban Explorer posted, hey, look at this building and look at the interior of it, to which I responded, please don't go inside. Please don't trespass on that property anymore, please. Thank you. But, you know, we're very excited for the project overall. It's been a topic of conversation at several town council meetings recently as to the delays. Council is right, you know, we had, we had a timetable set up in our abatement schedule for demolition and, you know, the town went out and got the, uh, the Brownfield Grant for a million dollars. Stuart did an excellent job.
Three million, three million.
Sorry, three million. Stuart did an excellent job, uh, working with the state to obtain that. So we want the town, I think from the town's perspective, we want the project to move forward. So I want to just kind of comment the good, the bad, the ugly of, of what I've seen here. So I think, you know, first of all, I think the townhouses being removed in favor of some of that buffer zone looks like an improvement. Aligning of the parking lot to no longer have all the twists and turns but be straightways, I think is overall benefit. You know, I was thinking of how many cars would go through in the way it used to kind of weave. I could see that being an issue. And it looks like, and, and I think this would be helpful, I think your architect indicated this, but the distance from Christian Hill Road to where the prior townhouse was in page 14 and 15 versus where the parking, where the building would be, it seems like everything is set back further towards the 372 part of the project. So I think with the right birmingham or shielding, it may be a little better because of the distance. But I do think a cross-section would be helpful, especially demonstrating the kind of gradual turn because you start at 30, I think the elevation was 30 and it goes up to 50 across the property. My concern though are twofold. One, the decrease in commercial space by half in the front. As you know, from the abatement perspective, the commercial space is non-abated whereas the residential was abated. So, um, you know, I, I'd like to see retail in the front or some restoration of some of the retail space in the front. But the other concern is that second building in the rear. This is a concern I had with the prior building when I was on the council. Five stories with the way that the elevation is, if there's any way to finagle the architecture to have it be gradual, a gradual decrease towards the back. One of the nice things about the townhome kind of plan was that it would kind of transition into residential. I don't know if there's a possibility for that back building to have maybe four and a half stories. Maybe it kind of tapers off as the elevation gets higher. I don't know if that's possible. I just want to make sure that there, the shielding or whatever is happening on the backside addresses the residents' concerns but also allows for, you know, you maximizing. I know you want to try to get as many units as you can in there, but, you know, being cognizant of the residential nature of the rear. So I think if, if, when you answer my questions, if you could just clarify the distance from where the townhouses used to be, if we're looking at that one versus where the parking is, um, to where now the backmost unit will be, how many feet away and what the elevation of that backmost unit will be. Uh, I anticipate it'll probably be like at the 45 or fif- maybe 45 mark versus where the other one would have been at the higher mark abutting the properties. But, um, if there's any way to finagle it so that the, there's a little bit of a decrease as you get towards the tippy-tippy back, I think, or at least that back wing, I think it would be helpful. But otherwise, again, the parking lot improvements are really appreciated. I really appreciate the two parking philosophy versus the one and a half because most people, like, I live in a two-bedroom condo with my husband and we each have our own car. And I think that's pretty typical of a two-bedroom. You're probably going to have two people, each person's going to have their own car. One and a half parking spaces is probably not really viable. So I appreciate the parking increases a lot. So, yeah, um, I'd lo- I'd love to hear more. I want to thank you though also for investing in Cromwell and continuing to invest in Cromwell Council. Thank you for coming back. This is a site that needs to be improved. When we have the largest sporting event in New England and people have to drive past when they get off a highway obliterating site, it doesn't look great. So we, we really want, from the town's perspective, for the project to move forward, but we want to make sure that the residents are being respected nearby and we have that nice transition of space versus obliterating buildings. So thank you all for your, for your time, your presentation and appreciate you all.
It is now. Thank you, Alice. So I got a bunch of questions. One of my major questions here, the one, the reason why I liked, first of all, was the last property approved five-story, was a five-story approval? Was that the parking garage that was approved five stories?
I'm going to leave this for the attorney to answer.
Well, it was our approval. I don't, I mean.
I understood it, the altitude elevation of the tall is the stage.
Yeah, all right. So I guess my question is this, the major structure, right? So the big building, the big giant block that we have, that we're looking at now with the new proposal versus the, like, what's the distance between the, that building and that back property line toward Christian Hill? In comparison to the old plan? Be curious to see what that distance is. And kind of part of what James was saying where, you know, when you had those houses or those townhouses on that, that side there, it kind of broke up the vision of the building, you know? It kind of gave you more of a residential feel. I, I'm just, I'm concerned as well as what that's going to look like from Christian Hill Road. I'd also like to know the distance and it might be in one of these packets, the distance of that buffer that you show in the new proposal of that grass. What is that? What is that distance? This, what's that actual buffer here?
So I'd like to just point out one thing.
Yes.
For everybody before we start. This is a conceptual plan, okay? So to worry about exact distances in a conceptual plan stage, to worry about the size of the buffer, what's going to be in the buffer, that's really not what we're discussing at this point. We'll see those at a detail level. Asking them those question, you have to limit your question, the detail of your questions because we're not at the level of detail now. We have no landscaping plan. We have no screening plan. You know, I, I'm just not, not picking on you.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm not asking for trees. I'm asking just the distance.
Yeah, okay.
Because a lot of times what happens is this turns into a real plan, right?
It's going to turn into a real plan.
I know. So that's why I was asking what the distance is.
I'm just pointing that out. I'm not picking on you or anything. I'm just want to point that out before everybody gets into their questions. We're talking about a conceptual plan. So let's make sure the questions that we ask are, are conceptual. You know, they're not in detail because we don't have a detail plan.
Sure.
We can ask for general distances to a building as far as what the building's going to look like and how many levels a building's going to have. We have a rough idea of the height of the building, you know, that's kind of where we're at. So I just want to remind everybody before they start formulating those questions, like, that's where we are. And, and I'd like to also point out in general that this has always been a commercial site. And it's always been a commercial site next to a residential neighborhood. It will always be a commercial site next to a residential neighborhood. So there are consequences living near a commercial site, okay? Now, this development could go away. Somebody could come back with a shopping center that could have stores that are open 24 hours a day, that have deliveries around the clock. So, you know, as, as far as, you know, commercial development goes, you know, this is a good transition. You'd like to see this type of transition from a commercial area to a residential area. Because this is really the minimal intrusive type of development that you'll see. So this is, in, in a, in a planning sense, this is the ideal transition. Because you're going from a commercial strip to a residential neighborhood and in the middle of it, you're putting a residential neighborhood. So that's, that's the, the positive side of it. So I want everybody to kind of keep that in mind. And again, when you're formulating your questions, you know, please have them be conceptual. General distances are okay, but we're not going to have more, they, they won't have more information than that because they haven't formulated the plans. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Again, so back to going from the old plan and why we liked it and the new plan. A lot of the exterior architecture and the, the products that they were using was going to be in line with their product or their building on Silastine, which was nice. It wasn't just vinyl siding.
That's what we're going to see when we get to the final.
No, I, I know what we're going to see.
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah.
Fully understand.
Okay.
I'd like to know the addresses or the properties in West Harford and Farmington that you say you, you have. Just curious what those properties look like. And let's see, what else do I have? That's it for now. That's it for now. I'm sure my questions will get picked up.
Just two comments. One, it would be nice to know or have a picture of a rendition, what it would look like from Christian Hill looking into the complex. I think that would be a very positive thing.
That'll be seen at the final stage.
I, I know, but, but it would be nice, um, when the final stage, I'd like, I'd like to see that, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, it would be nice to know your plan for affordable housing.
There's going to be 10% just like the other project.
Well, they didn't say that, so I didn't hear that.
They said that at the beginning.
I know, you said the original plan that was part of the abatement had, had affordable housing. You didn't say that this plan was having affordable housing. So it'll continue. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my concern is similar to Brian and the mayor's where the townhouses provided a nice transition from the high-density to the lower-density housing. So with those gone and the parking pushed closer to Christian Hill Road, I guess I'd like to know, you know, what your ideas were for that transition into the residential neighborhood. And, and, you know, this is probably further down the road, but some sort of, uh, because the slope is working against us, uh, some sort of line of sight study from, uh, the homes on Christian Hill Road. And, and again, I know this is still conceptual, but, uh, the entrance off Berlin Road seems really tight to me right now. In the original design, there was a rotary, there was, uh, wider transitions.
There was no rotary in the original design.
There was, yeah, there was.
Yeah.
At, at the entrance?
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a conceptual drawing.
Well, no, this is the old.
Yeah, that's the old concept, yeah.
Right past the three trees.
Yeah, there's just a, yeah.
They've got a circular area. I don't know if you call it a rotary or not because I don't think there's a center island, but there is a circular area designated on that plan.
Yeah, I would see that as a rotary, but, uh, just saying that, you know, there was more staging area for cars pulling out onto Berlin Road. Right now we have, you know, parking spots literally what looks like, you know, within 20 feet of the road. You know, I, I can see during your peak times, um, you know, cars queuing up there and blocking a lot of those stalls and stuff. And just needing more general room and all, so I think that, you know, features like that might cut into your parking count somewhat. And so, yeah, I guess, you know, when we get to that, if you could kind of talk about your entrance/exit strategy. That's all. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I just echo what you guys were saying as far as the setback. I like how the setback is further into 372 from Christian Hill. I think that's a, that's a positive step, but then obviously the transition and blocking of, you know, what the residents on Christian Hill are going to be looking at is important. Also, John's point to the entrance, that seems like a choke point, especially with the commercial building up front there coming in. We'd just like to see probably left and right hand exit lanes there and then a decent-sized en- entrance to the complex would be a positive step. Also, the alley between building, uh, the first, the commercial building and building and the first residential building seems kind of tight as well. Would probably be, just looks like it would be a one-way. It would be nice to have that to be a little bit bigger, I think. And also loading zones for the commercial building too. I don't really see too much of that there as far as if you're going to have trucks coming in and out of that area. You're going to need to put them somewhere and I don't really see any of that here. That's all I really have right now. Okay. Conceptually, um, the old entrance I found a lot more attractive. The new entrance, I think, has a queuing problem with the cars. There's probably a half a dozen stalls that are actually going to be backing out into the entrance and exiting traffic. So I, I think that needs to be definitely looked at and studied. I, in the old plan, I was very happy with the amount of commercial space and the new plan, I'm very unhappy with the amount of commercial space. If the commercial building, which I believe you're calling Building C, could be a two-story building with double the commercial space, that would really trip my trigger. The building height, as previously mentioned, I think is-
The building height, as previously mentioned, I think is an issue. The old plan gave us a gentle transition with the townhouses to the rear. The new plan does not do that, although the new plan does have the building situated further downhill on the property. This is all about elevation and it's all about line of sight. And I, I think we all need to see the conceptual drawings of how that's gonna work and whether we're going backwards or whether we're going forwards. A point was made by one of the public speakers about the public access to the passive recreation area and outdoor green space. I don't believe that there is appropriate width or parking area on Christian Hill Road for people to park on Christian Hill Road and use that rear entrance. So, I, I, I know that that's gonna be an emergency crash gate only, it's gonna be chained, it's gonna be gated, it's gonna be key access, it's not gonna be just a rope and a string. That being said, I think somehow, some way, for the public to use that green area, they're gonna have to use it from your property and not park on Christian Hill Road.
Can I just point some, one thing out? When they say public access, they mean the surrounding neighborhood, okay? They mean the people that already use it now. There are many people that walk their dogs there.
Okay.
Who live on Christian Hill Road. They don't mean that somebody from Main Street is gonna drive over there to walk their dog. What they mean by public access is the surrounding neighborhood has access to it. They're not designing this to be an open space for the community, for the town of Cromwell. They're providing access to the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah.
To use this, so, they don't, it, people are using it now. People are basically, you know, like, like any, any open space property, you know, people go there, they walk their dogs, they walk there.
So, there's no possibility of people parking on the street and wanting to use that as their dog walk area?
No, that's not what it's designed for, yeah, it's not what it's designed for.
Then it should be placarded accordingly.
Well, it's, it's private property. And it's not, it's not designed to be open to the pub, it's not, I'll, I'll let them explain. But that was always the concept.
Okay.
In the original development, it was never proposed as like a public park. It was, it was always inferred that the property is available for use.
That it's private property.
Yeah, but it's available for use by the surrounding neighbors.
Okay, and that's fine.
And that was, that was a benefit that they were offering to the, the previous developer. Was offering to the surrounding neighbors, and I think that's the same kind of idea here.
If that's the intent, that's great. If we have an issue of people wanting to use this as their dog park instead of the one on Cole's Road?
I, I don't think anybody that doesn't walk their dog there, I don't think people drive their, walk their dog now.
I, I hope you're right.
Yeah.
I hope you're right. At the end of the day, there shouldn't be any parking on Christian Hill Road, that's my point.
Yeah, there isn't any proposed. And, and I'd like to mention that, that we've had that emergency gate for many years.
Oh, I know, I know.
And if you think about the uses that have been at that hotel, in the largest ballroom in the state of Connecticut.
Absolutely.
And, you know, and the amount of traffic.
That needs to be maintained.
Yeah, and, and that's what we're gonna require, that's what we required of the previous developer.
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna require again. And it hasn't changed over the years.
You're right.
Even when they had, you know, when you'd have six hundred people in the ballroom, they weren't driving out to Christian Hill Road.
I can tell you that many, many years ago, it was an issue.
Right, but it's gated.
And they did exit to Christian Hill Road, and in fact, the chain, it was a chain, it wasn't a massive gate with locks, and they would cut the chain. Believe me when I tell you, I can tell you from personal experience.
You did?
Having replaced the chain, no.
Have you cut the chain?
No, I replaced the chain, I can't tell you how many times. Actually, they would steal the chain, especially the four, four-wheelers and off-roaders, because it was a thirty-foot chain, but that's another story for another time. I do, I do. Long story short, I was in love with the old plan, and with the new plan, not so much. I need to see more detail, and with that, I pass on.
I think everybody covered most of my questions. The only question I most likely had was, with your parking spot count, does that run all the way to the front of the commercial building? So, like, if that commercial building is Starbucks or something, and these parking spots are full, does that count as part of your residential parking? Cause that kinda sounds like a, might be a mess, but. Yeah, I mean, drive-through, I mean, it doesn't seem like it, but. I think everything else has been covered and asked already, so, that's all I have.
No comment this time? Like, see the next drawings and, I, elevations and buffering zones?
I don't have any really comments, because this is just a conceptual. I'm waiting to see the real thing. But I do wanna say is that I was not in love with the old plan, I didn't like the cereal boxes that they called townhouses at all. I mean, I thought, you know, they all loved them, but I'm old and I thought they were just idiots. But, you know, so, but I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, things that, that, what I call the meat of the thing. And, you know, again, you know. And I always had trouble with them calling this open space that people had access to, and I'm saying is, what people? Because it is private property. And therefore, if you fall on somebody's property, they have to carry insurance on it. And I, I'm just saying is, if it was just for the people that lived on that property, that's one thing. But to say that it's open for people who walk their dogs up Christian Hill, I, I just think that, you know, I wouldn't want them coming in on my property. And I don't think anybody on Christian Hill would want people coming into their open space or their backyard and things like that. But that's beside the point, so, we can move forward. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
No, we closed it to him.
No, we're not, we're still open, not their responses, thank you.
Okay.
Again, for the record, Megan Hope with Alter Pearson and Hope. So, just to, and I'm just gonna kinda go in order for the questions that we, actually, no, let me start with the neighbors first. Alright, so, I do think, Sealan, what we can do on that next iteration of plans, we've obviously had these cross-sections, but I think what we can do is probably pull that view wider to capture the houses on Christian Hill right, right now, our cross-sections are just on our site. So, I think it makes sense to pull it wider, especially more towards the north. And we can actually put in, I think, the houses, however tall the houses are on Christian Hill Road, and add that into our cross-section, I think that's gonna be helpful for the next iteration of plans. So, that's definitely something we can do. Obviously, on the last plan that was approved, we really didn't have a lot of buffering as far as landscaping on Christian Hill Road, because we had the townhouses. So, that obviously is something that is gonna be changed on this plan. We're gonna have to have a robust buffering plan, which is something we didn't really have last time, cause we had the townhouses there. And I believe Sealan checked this as far as the distances, but it was, previously, those townhouses were about fifty feet from Christian Hill Road, so that's where that building was the most northerly part. Now, we're pulling it back to about two hundred and sixty feet from Christian Hill Road as far as building to building. So, that's how much approximately it, okay, sorry, yeah, let me.
No, it's from the, from this main building here.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, do you see that?
Yeah.
Alright, let me, let's see if we can get an answer, I'll move on, that's okay. Yep. Okay, let's see what else. So, we can definitely do the cross-sections with the elevations. We previously, in the previous application, we had commercial in that front building along Christian Hill Road, and then we had it on the first floor of that next apartment building. And that's what's been eliminated with this plan. So, I think there was a question, wasn't there some commercial on the first floor? It was in that first residential apartment building headed back into the site. I mean, Berlin Road, Berlin Road, yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that nothing wasn't confused, thank you.
So, that was one of the areas where we eliminated some of the commercial square feet. The client does feel like what we're proposing now, this thirteen thousand square feet, is leasable. He thinks, especially it would be, we think in restaurants, it's probably gonna be some local restaurants is what we think will have interest here. But we feel like the thirteen thousand is the right amount of square footage for this size development. So, it did decrease from what Lexington was doing, but we still feel like it's mixed. Obviously, your regulations don't have any specific square footage for what is mixed use, just says that you need to have some commercial and some residential as well. So, we're still consistent with the regulations regarding that, okay. Rock, with the sewer line, can you answer that question?
So, actually, very similar to the previously approved project, they had to realign the sewer main on our property, because it is gonna honestly be in conflict with the new building. So, there's gonna be a new, there's an existing sewer easement that has to be rewritten, and then the existing sewer main has to be rerouted, that's essentially what's gonna be going on.
The other thing, Rock, while you're up here, I think there was a question about parking, and is that going closer into the wetlands as was previously approved? And I know on the previous project, we had no direct wetland impact for our proposal.
So, under this plan, I believe it's actually, the parking though, is basically along Coles Brook, is actually a little bit further away than previously approved. And I can even, hopefully, we can, it's right behind it, right? So, you can kinda see it, that actual black line that's going across here is the property line. And here, the property line is actually a little bit easier to see, but you can see that we're actually gonna be trying to propose a sort of landscape buffer between the parking and the property line. So, we're actually pushing that parking back, probably not much, but enough that we can install a nice buffer. Next one was dark, uh, lighting. So, obviously, with every sort of site plan approval, we have to perform a photometric plan. Your regulations state that there can be no light trespass on neighboring property. All the light fixtures will be dark sky compliant, specifically that we will make sure that anything that's along the parking will have shields, that way it does not impact the residential neighborhood.
Alright, thanks, Rock. Alright, I, I did wanna touch briefly on, on this public access. So, our intent has always been with the public access, that people are currently trespassing on the site to walk their dogs. We did get comments during the initial outreach that people wanted to be able to continue to walk their dogs. Where are we gonna stop them was basically what, the, the feedback that we received. So, we said, we'll put in an easement saying that the public can access. We do mean the people from Christian Hill Road, that's all we're noticing who's walking their dogs there. We're not aware of anybody parking. If the commission feels like they don't wanna have access for those Christian Hill neighborhoods, we don't have to have it in the plan, we incorporated it before because residents had asked for it. So, that's, that's the genesis of how that got there, but we're not anticipating anybody to drive here and park. I don't think anybody's doing that now. So, the intent is that it's really just would be a neighborhood sort of access space. And just to be clear, I know the Christian Hill Road has that tail piece that goes out between the houses, that is not where access would be, that's just where the existing frontage is now on that lot. And I know, if you can see sort of on this plan, and we had had this in the previous plan, we were proposing to buffer behind that house, because it is open right now. So, we were going to, in the previous plan, there was buffering that was proposed there, we would do that. But we would also plant trees in front of that tail out to Christian Hill Road so that people would know that's not the correct location to walk in, you need to walk in over where the sidewalk connection is. So, we weren't proposing any gates or anything out, just more do it with a visual tree or other buffering just to prevent people from accessing between the houses, push them further to, to where the sidewalk is into our site. Okay, so, I know there was a question about the gate and how we can guarantee that it would remain. I, I think Mr. Canata explained it pretty well, that we're not just talking about a chain, that would, it would be a heavy gate, probably have a knock box or some other mechanism that emergency services would break in the need of an emergency. And because this will be part of our approved plan, if we ever wanted to change it, we'd have to come back to this commission for approval. So, it's not something we could just take off the plan, it would be integral to our approval, it'd be part of the approved site plan recorded on the land records. It really would be up to the commission at a later date upon somebody's request if they wanted to remove it. And I know that with the previous application, we obviously went through a full traffic study, parking analysis, we do have the state reviewing everything, because we're on the state road and we're obviously close to ninety-one as well. So, they've felt confident that the traffic can safely enter and exit from Berlin Road and that we don't need a second access point. Sometimes with developments, you do need a second access point, but the traffic report that was approved has showed that it, it will work. We've obviously decreased the commercial square footage and the apartments slightly. So, if anything, I think our, our projected traffic will be less than what was previously approved. Okay. Let's see what else here. Alright, we did decrease. So, again, we did, a question about the five stories, and I, I did think I mentioned this during the presentation, but I'll reiterate it. Previously, the most rear apartment building that was sort of next to the parking garage went up to elevation one oh six point six four, so that's the top of the building, that's what the elevation was. And now, the top of our building in that same location is one oh six. So, essentially, essentially the same as far as elevation. Again, I think if we did the cross-section, pulling it more towards the north with the house on Christian Hill, we can better show that, but just to reiterate that point, we're up to that same elevation. Okay. I'm gonna get into the questions that we received from the commission. Do we have a, two ten, okay, so, to answer your question, two hundred and ten feet. Okay, so, we've increased it another fifty feet. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay, you're welcome. Alright, so, again, I know there was a lot of questions about the buffer, we have about fifty feet of green space there. I don't know yet, Rock, if we know what the topography or grading would be like there, if you can, yeah.
So, as we do with every kind of site plan, especially with something like this, the parking, the grading of the parking is essentially gonna try and tie into existing grade as fast as possible. So, most of the buffer is anticipated to be the existing trees that are there today, the existing mature trees, along with a, probably a robust landscape plan just north of the parking, to make sure that, one, we're kinda, you know, I think there was a question regarding headlights. You know, we'll have low-lying shrubs that are probably about three to four feet tall, you know, evergreen style, that way they obscure headlights. Additionally, we'll have some trees that are spaced per your regulations to make sure we're meeting all the requirements, and that'll kinda fill in the gap. And then, obviously, we have the mature trees that'll remain in place. You know, a mature tree could get upwards of sixty feet. You know, if we're at about elevation sixty-three at the top of Hill of Christian Hill Road, you're probably looking more at the canopy being above the building. At which, obviously, when we're coming back for the site plan approval, there'll be a view shed analysis for you that'll basically tell you, hey, this is what you're essentially gonna be seeing for this building from the perspective of Christian Hill Road, from the road, or potentially from a neighboring property on maybe like the second floor of the house. You know, that way you kinda get a great idea of, this is what you're gonna be seeing from this neighborhood.
Thanks, Rock. Some of the other, and just to be clear regarding the affordable, we're maintaining the affordability component that we agreed to in the tax abatement agreement. So, that's, will be ten percent of the multifamily units for forty years, and that'll be at the eighty percent AMI. So, that we're not, not proposing any changes to what was previously agreed to. Again, that's in that agreement with the town council, but I can make that representation here. I think when we were here the last time, we hadn't gotten to that town council phase, we weren't quite sure when you, when you voted, but we could say that with certainty at this point. Okay? The, oh, sorry, go ahead, yeah, yeah. Ten percent of two sixty-seven, so, twenty-seven?
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, yeah, no. We want Rock here to answer that question. Yeah, yes, yeah, that's okay, okay. But it's, it's honestly quote, close to what it was before, cause we had, we actually had two hundred and, it's a little bit more, cause we had two hundred and fifty-four, four apartments before, so, we got a couple more with this scenario. Okay? We do, the comment about the parking, the parking spaces close to Berlin Road, I think we definitely can look at that, and you wanna talk to that, Rock?
So, obviously, everything's tied to the parking demand. So, as you can see, the previously approved plan that was based on what I said, the one point five and the mixed use, this is two spaces per unit. You know, average market today is more like one point eight. So, I think when we come back for a site plan, those spaces will probably get eliminated and that entryway will be a little bit more. a little bit more defined for you to make sure there's proper circulation. And we may be, you know, we'd have to double check to see if there's a waiver request for a small reduction in parking, even though the regulation technically says 1.5. I know we're probably going to go more towards two. But, you know, if we could eliminate, you know, the 10, 12 spaces to make it a better entryway, I think that's probably something that we'd like to discuss and something that you probably would like to gain as well. So that'll come, obviously, with the updated site plan.
And one of the things we had submitted with the previous application, which is something we maybe want to discuss, we did have a shared parking study that we submitted with the previous application, because obviously, we're providing parking for the residents and parking for the commercial, but at night, the, there's no cars there for the commercial uses. So some of the residents are able to park there, and then when they go to work in the morning, there's some more flexibility. So we had provided a shared parking analysis previously that gave a peak number of parking spaces, that the traffic engineer, he did an analysis on the IT manual to give us what that peak parking number was. And then we made sure that we had that on site. So that's what we had done previously, and that's something we could update with this current, but that might give you some more comfort regarding the number of parking spaces that we have. And then potentially, we may have some room at the, at the front part to create some more queuing space. Okay. And we could look at the rotary, too. I know that was another, another question as well. Okay. And I think we definitely heard you guys on the loading zone, which is something we can incorporate into the next plan, think about how those commercial developments would get serviced as far as, you know, delivery vehicles as well. Okay.
Do you also ever provide a loading, call it a loading zone if you want, but I mean, you're talking 267 units?
For residents?
Yeah. For the residents to be able to show up with a moving van or whatever and load and unload. I don't know if that's worked into your parking plan, or if it's just kind of hunt and pack and get what you get.
Yeah, we could definitely have a designated move-in area for next time. And we can also discuss, we obviously have a lot of experience in managing these developments, so we could talk about how it typically works as far as move-in days and times and things like that. So we could put a narrative together for that.
There's going to be a fair amount of coming and going.
For sure.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay. I think that's all the questions I had. If I missed anything, or if anybody had any additional questions based on my responses?
On the 10% affordable content, could you give us some kind of a breakdown in the future of what those units are going to consist of, studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, how many of each, and what the breakdown would be?
Yeah, so.
And I don't need that this instance.
Sure. Yeah, we can get, we can, yeah, we could put that on the next set of plans.
Thank you.
That's not a problem. Very doable.
Affordable is important to us.
Yeah.
Large rotations.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I understand. So I think that answered, I tried to answer all the questions that we got from the public and from the commission. We're happy to answer any other questions. And also, if there's also any other feedback that you want to be sure we incorporate.
Just, just to pick up on what Brian said, the addresses for the other complexes that you guys are building?
Yes, very quickly. I just want to make this first point before I get to that. Line of side diagrams, absolutely. We'll get those to you. Those are going to be important. And it's our opinion that having, addressing scaling down to the neighborhood with a larger setback works much better than a two-story townhouse. So we'll show you that. In terms of our work, the, I just Googled it now because I had to. There's a project on, and there's, we do placemaking and amenity consulting. The Farmington projects are that. It's Pondview, Madison Park Road, and there's one on the hill in Farmington. Those are interiors, so don't judge the exteriors on that from, in terms of our work. The exteriors is the, in West Hartford, there's LaSalle and Arapaho. It's a new project called Center Park Place, going up in the middle of town. It'll start construction in a few months. And if you are Googling us, then we just finished the Delma Mystic and, the Delma at Mystic, it's one of ours. And, and we have a very large project in Darien called the Colvin District. So we're reimagining the center of downtown Darien, so those off you.
Okay. All right, so I think just to sum up, I obviously know this is.
Can I ask you one last thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you, could you use the large map and show where the woman who was concerned that you might be on her property, where your property is compared to her property?
Sure. Rock, can you with that red?
Yeah.
But that's not our property.
That's Lowe's.
Right. So show us where the, could you just highlight where our property line is?
Yes.
Because, right there. Because we're not going beyond that point. Because we're not allowed to because it's not our property.
We essentially maintain our property to the west of Colesbrook.
So where her property is, imagining Lowe's is down here, okay?
Yeah.
So, yeah, you need to go back to the smaller one. Yeah, you need to, yeah, so her property would be here, and here, the, the roof is going, yeah, over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, and just to be clear, what we're proposing in that 15R Christian Hill Road, which is that, that abutting properties, we're not proposing to, to do any work in there except for planting trees. We haven't programmed it, but we were thinking passive recreation uses benches, something like that. We're not proposing anything active, like a pickleball court or anything like that. Would be passive walking trails. And I don't, I don't believe we're proposing to cut down any trees either. My understanding of where that sort of clearing is on the plan is there's one sort of existing now. And then we obviously were proposing to do some additional buffering where we're showing those trees on that one house that's sort of next to that strip, right next to the finger, correct? Because that one was, it's, I believe when I'd been out there before, it's, it's that residence lawn, and then it just keeps kind of going. And we really wanted to differentiate so that people weren't walking into that neighbor's property. So we felt like we would accentuate that property line with some plantings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stuart, do you think you could have Jennifer send us in an email the addresses of the properties so that anyone on the commission here could either Google them or visit them if we're out and about, that kind of thing?
You mean, which properties?
The properties that.
They're doing in Connecticut right now.
That the attorney had just identified.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll get the information.
If you could get the information out to all the commissioners.
Yeah, we could send an email with like hyperlinks in it, if that helps.
Yeah, you can send me that.
Yeah, yeah, you could forward it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not, not a problem. So just like, just to conclude, our plan continues to be consistent with the P O C D. Obviously, this site was specifically called out for mixed-use development. We think we've proposed an amendment to that existing plan that still has a good mix of legitimate commercial space and residential apartments that we feel like are still needed in town. We've, we do agree by, by placing that commercial square footage closer to Berlin Road, we are continuing that sort of natural transition from commercial next to the road to residential. And as we move forward, I think we heard the commission and the neighbors loud and clear, buffering is extremely important. We need cross-sections and views from Christian Hill Road. And also, we'll refine some of those site plans with some of those finer details on the drive aisles, the parking spaces. And I think next time, too, as well, we can probably expand this plan and do like our rendered site plan over an aerial as well, so we can see some of those neighboring properties as well. I think that would help with the discussion. So, yeah, we could definitely, definitely do that. That's not a problem. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that the commission has, or?
Stuart, I have a question for you, because this is a modification or to the original, right?
Right.
So therefore, like, we had like one and a half car parking spaces. I don't know about I have a car. Now we're in two.
What's our new regulation?
So that's our new regulation.
New regulation is two.
Right, is two.
So they are meeting the new regulations.
So this applies to this, because they modified it.
When they come in with the site plan, yeah.
Well, I mean, no, no, when they come in with the site.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I have one more question. So you're counting the sites, right? So are you counting the ones with the, in the commercial area?
Yeah, so, so the, the parking count we gave for 533 is the parking for everything that's on site. So we have the two for the apartments, and then we have more parking spaces than that for the commercial. Right. And we, we didn't complete that shared parking analysis, but if that's, we had, we did that last time, and if that's important, we can or, we don't have to. It's obviously up to.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see all the detailed information when we get to that stage.
Right.
I think the shared parking would be important, especially since you're targeting it towards restaurants, which may be open later in the evening if they have visitors.
I'm just asking also, when you're coming with the new one, is that, because a lot of these places, you have people coming, but they do have visitors.
Yep.
So do they, are you having any designated spots that's called visitors?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just called that you.
Yeah, so part of the two calculation is, is our visitor spaces. And I think what we're finding is for actual residents' cars, it's really like a 1.7 is what is actually needed. And so we give that buffer up to the two because that incorporates visitors. So that's, and obviously, that's in their experience in doing multiple, you obviously have your own regulation which we're meeting, but it's also important for us to have enough parking for our development as well, because that makes it successful. So yes, we feel like our two captures what our residents would need and then also visitors.
In your typical residential plans, do you guys like number of parking?
Like assign it?
To, assign to the?
We don't. I know everybody always asks that, but, yeah.
Well, I mean, if you're limited, there's only half a parking.
So what is your next step?
Sure. So our next step is really to let SLR loose on the plan, and they need to do obviously a total set of site plans. So that's your 40-scale set of plans with grading and drainage.
The works.
The works. And then I think at that point, we will need to determine, do we need a new wetland permit? Do we need to modify that existing permit? So we don't really know that until SLR does all the grading. And then we would come back to you after either having modified our wetland permit or getting a new one. And then we'd obviously have a full set of site plans, architecture, these additional cross-sections, more details on the landscaping plan, the lighting. We'd have that full, thick set of plans. So that, that would be our next step, is really to take this to, to an fully engineered set of site plans.
So in terms of, and you probably can't answer this yet, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. In terms of the grant and the demolition.
We're working on that.
You're working, you're working on the grant, but my question is, with the grant and the demolition, when do you anticipate the demolition would start? And is the demolition contingent upon approval? Or do you think demolition could start virtually immediately?
So, yeah, we need approval, right? Yeah. So we do need approval, because we're still under contract to purchase us. So we're not going to, you know, all the deposits have gone hard, so we're, we need approval so that we can close.
Yeah.
And then we're estimating, if all goes to plan, that we'd be able to demo at the end of quarter one, 2026.
So we're looking at six months to start demo, assuming approval goes relatively rapidly.
Correct.
So Stuart, we need to do approval tonight so that they can start.
Right. And I, I just want to go back to the grant for a second. So we received the $3 million grant from the state of Connecticut, based on, on the demolition of the building.
Right.
So the demolition of the building and all the things that are entailed with the demolition of the building is not going to change. That, that's a done deal. That's a done story. The, the question is, with the $3 million grant, there are certain restrictions. So a good example is when they did the, what's the building, the Ames Building in Rocky Hill. Okay, so they got, they got big grant there, okay, from the state.
They didn't use it.
They didn't, no. What they did was they took that grant, and they reduced it to $1 under a million. So it lessened basically the restrictions that are placed on you when you use state money.
Right.
Such as Davis Bacon wages. And also, with the latest round of brownfield grants, what the state did was they incorporated many, many requirements in regards to housing. So they have requirements for a larger percentage of affordable housing. They have actually requirements for what the market rate could be on the other housing. So there's a, there's a lot of restrictions. So basically, what the previous owner was and what the new proposed owner is doing is they're looking at that grant, and they're seeing what aspects of that grant can they live with, and is it possible to reduce the amount of the grant, such as they did with the Ames facility, to allow for a little more flexibility. So we're in the process of reviewing the grant.
It's a study. It's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress. So, you know, they would go forward as they gave you their schedule. And obviously, you know, everybody would like to use some of that state money, but we have to see what, what is going to be really possible. And that's what we're trying to determine. The state is aware of that. The DEC office knows that we're still working on that aspect of it, and they're waiting for our response.
So from a timing standpoint, do you anticipate, or I should say, does SLR anticipate that we'll see you in a month? Are we going to see you in two months?
We got to approve.
Yeah, it's more like between six to eight weeks, because we, we need to obviously do an entire zoning analysis on top of everything, put everything together. But don't worry, we'll have award-winning landscape architect Jason Williams on, on, on the case.
So that'd be good. So we could be looking at a nice Christmas present, right?
Yes.
Yes. Do you want?
Actually, it's them that's getting the Christmas.
No, I know. I said, we could be looking at a Christmas present coming for us with a great plan to move ahead, right?
I, I will say right now.
Hopefully, this gets approved.
Well, that's why I'm pushing.
I will wrap it. Just, just for you.
Thank you. This has been a long, painful, laborious process, and I know that the entire town, from the mayor down to the resident on the other side of town, everybody wants this done. Everybody wants this to go. And, but we want to do it once and right, not twice and wrong.
So we need to close the public hearing.
Anybody done? Everybody done? Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, second, please. Did you second? Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
All right, make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the concept plan of application 2523, application to amend special permit under section 3.6.1c.4, Town of Cromwell zoning regulations to modify the master plan at 100 Berlin Road.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
And I will compliment you. That was an excellent presentation.
No.
I was not a happy camper walking into this room tonight, and you convinced me. So good job.
Very.